Good morning, everybody. It's 9:01. We're gonna go ahead and get started if everybody could find a seat. We'll go ahead and get today's Flagler County Board of County Commissioners meeting underway. This is June 3, 2024. It is 9:01 a.m. If everybody could please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. We also, at this time, take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, there are no additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda today. We have a few announcements. Join us Monday, June 17, at 10 a.m. for the Flagler County U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Coastal Storm Risk Management Beach Renewishment or Beach Nourishment Project Groundbreaking. That's at Veterans Park in Flagler Beach. Again, that's the 17th at 10 a.m. We have a few board vacancies, council vacancies. Those can be found on FlaglerCounty.gov. Go to the Transparency Dashboard page, select Citizen Advisory Boards, and from that point, you'll be able to view further information or to apply. Those positions are open until filled. Upcoming commission meetings, workshops, and special meetings. We have a workshop today, June 3, at 1 p.m. Next meeting of the regular Board of County Commissioners is Monday, June 17. That's at 5 p.m. So we have the groundbreaking at 10 a.m. at the beach, and then a regular meeting at 5 p.m. on Monday, the 17th. And June 19 is the Juneteenth holiday. County offices will be closed. So our first recognition today is the Flagler County Sheriff's Office recognizing Board of County Commissioner staff members. Today, we have Sheriff Rick Staley and Commander Michael Lutz from the Sheriff's Office. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and recognize some of your employees. So I'm gonna let Commander Lutz, who worked with these gentlemen, to call out their names. Hopefully, they're here. And I delegated that as soon as I read the first name, because I didn't want to butcher it. So I'm gonna let Mike do that. But, you know, it takes a partnership to make our community safe. And two of your employees, we, just in crime prevention, was signage at the beach access parks, those kind of things, and they installed them. So we just wanted to recognize and thank them for doing that. So, Mike.
Timothy Kaczynski. Hopefully, I said that correctly. Dennis Bobic. Nick Hunter.
Timothy, right?
Yes.
All right, Timothy.
Thank you.
And all the certificates read the same.
Commissioners, they say certificate, excuse me, of appreciation presented to Timothy, and how do you pronounce your last name?
Kaczynski.
Oh, you didn't even get close.
I didn't even get close, sorry.
In recognition of your assistance in installing at Flagler County Sheriff's Office anti-theft signs at locations across the county. And it's partnerships like this that we have with the county and their employees that helps us drive crime down over 50% since 2017. So education is part of that, and hopefully, these are good reminders when people get out of their cars to lock them up and hide their valuables so they don't get burglarized, especially as we enter summer in busy parks and along the beaches. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I also have, this won't get you anything or get you out of anything, but this is our official Sheriff's Office challenge point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Absolutely.
Congratulations, guys.
See ya.
Thank you very much. Well, we appreciate our partnership with you, Sheriff, so thank you very much for recognizing our folks. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for National Home Ownership Month, which is June 2024. This is requested by Joe Hegidis, our Health and Human Services Director, and today Commissioner Sullivan will be reading that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morning, Joe. Proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners proclaiming June 2024 as National Home Ownership Month in Flagler County. Well, this is one that applies to a lot of us. Whereas the United States has proclaimed June as National Home Ownership Month since 2002, recognizing that homeownership helps citizens build long-term wealth, vitalizes the middle class, and fortifies the national economy. And whereas homeowners and renters working toward homeownership raise families, develop their careers, plant roots, and contribute to the unique economic and social fabric of Flagler County. And whereas Flagler County Housing Services works to help citizens achieve the goal of homeownership through its Purchase Assistance Program in partnership with HUD-certified agencies who provide critical credit counseling and home-buying education, such as the Volusia County and Flagler County Extension Office and Mid-Florida Housing Partnership. And whereas Flagler County Housing Services partners with the St. John's Housing Partnership to install aging-in-place home modifications to increase the indoor air quality and energy efficiency in homes and to fully rehabilitate homes which preserves the long-term affordability of Flagler County's housing inventory while helping these homeowners build generational wealth. And whereas Flagler County Board of County Commissioners is committed to furthering innovative solutions to maintain and expand the affordability of housing for current workforce and retirees and future generations as set forth in the Flagler County's strategic plan. And whereas Flagler County Housing Services will continue to collaborate with financial institutions, real estate professionals, residential contractors, and builders, and other local businesses to enhance our local economy and maintain the vibrancy of our community through work which supports homeownership. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby declare June 2024 as National Home Ownership Month in the county of Flagler and urge all citizens to join us in working collaboratively to promote and safeguard the American dream of homeownership. Adopted this third day of June 2024, attested Tom Bexley, Cook of Court, and signed by our Chairman Dance. Thank you. And here's the certificate. There you go. And as you're going back, I make a motion to approve the proclamation for National Home Ownership Month.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sullivan, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. All those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Chair Dance and Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity and the proclamation. It's an important part of the fabric of Flagler County homeownership. And actually, I'm gonna step aside, introduce myself, sorry, Joe Hegidis, Director of Health and Human Services. I actually want to step aside and introduce Devery Parodowski, who's our Housing Services Program Manager. She and her very small team of one other person do amazing work, both with our homeownership program and a variety of other resources and services. So Devery has a few words to say, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Devery Parodowski, Housing Services Program Manager. And on a quick note, thank you for highlighting what Eduardo, our housing coordinator, does. He's done a whole lot of work since he got started. But as we reflect on Home Ownership Month in Flagler County, we are reminded of the profound significance of owning a home. Homeownership is about creating a sanctuary, building memories, achieving dreams, and fostering stability in community. Through our programs, we do help first-time homebuyers achieve the dream of homeownership, but home prices have increased to nearly seven times the area median income. So that's forced us to shift our focus a little bit more towards the housing preservation. So today, we emphasize the critical importance of our housing rehabilitation programs. They help homeowners maintain and improve their homes, but they also provide naturally occurring affordable housing for future first-time homebuyers. Housing rehabilitation represents our profound commitment to our community and our future. For each home we rehabilitate, we improve the living conditions, preserve generational wealth, and we reduce foreclosure risks, and we strengthen the community connections. This impact extends far beyond the individual. By refining our local procurement processes and expanding our capacity to do this work, we preserve Flagler County's long-term affordable housing inventory, we strengthen our local economy, and we advance the long-term goals of our comprehensive plan. So rebuilding, rehabilitating homes preserves the people who live in them. And we, as we restore the homes and revitalize our neighborhoods, we create safe, attractive, vibrant communities where people thrive. So we're fortunate to partner with St. John's Housing Partnership, a nonprofit which evaluates its home. They assess the energy efficiency and aging-in-place needs, and they inspect the quality of work performed on each home we rehabilitate. And this partnership is crucial because homeowners contribute their home equity in exchange for the cost of construction. And so their contribution contributes to enhancing Flagler County's housing inventory, increasing property values, and improving our communities. So from procurement to final construction, the work is a collaboration involving many stakeholders, including our nonprofits, contractors, the City of Palm Coast, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and various county departments. Most importantly, it is a partnership with each homeowner that commits to the program. So in this partnership honors the stories and lives woven into the fabric of Flagler County. So as we acknowledge Home Ownership Month, let us celebrate the joy and pride that comes with owning a home and the importance of working collaboratively to preserve homeownership. So we strive to ensure that our efforts to rehabilitate and harden homes reflects our commitment to the people who live in them here in Flagler County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It's a great opportunity to highlight the work that Housing Services does for the community, so get to celebrate that this month. So I appreciate you bringing that to us to highlight with the proclamation. Anybody else?
Well, just, you know, in Flagler County, homeownership is so key. We, you know, so many people, you know, individual homes here as opposed to big city kind of environment. So we have a big population, but we got a lot of individual residences out there.
And I'm impressed with some of the work that you've done. I've seen the reports on some, what you've done to, like, one house, what you can do to one house to make it amazing with windows and roofs. It's amazing what you all do. And, you know, you take an old house that's got a lot of problems, and you suddenly make it into a very livable, very livable abode. Thank you for your work.
All right, picture. Come on up, and you can come up to the dais. Come on all the way up.
All right, on to our next presentation. This is the airport update. So we have our Airport Director Roy Seeger gonna give us our quarterly update on the airport, what's happening, and kind of respond. We've had a few different citizen complaints come through, so Roy's gonna give us an update. And if we could touch, too, on the updates to the transparency page that are being worked on.
All part of it. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Roy Seeger. I'm the Director of the Flagler Executive Airport, and thank you for this opportunity this morning to give you an update on what's going on at the airport. So just recently, we completed several projects been going on for the last year. So we just completed the replacement of the air traffic control tower equipment. We completed the T-hanger construction. We actually moved in everybody on August, excuse me, April 1. We only had to go through 60 people to get 42 to fill that. We, believe it or not, we still have 100 people still in our hangar waiting list to be at the airport. The taxiway Alpha construction is also complete as well, and we also completed the general aviation terminal expansion. So all those projects have been complete. And our current project right now, it's in design phase right now. It's the design of a wildlife hazard fence. You can see that area that's kind of highlighted in the aqua color. That will be our wildlife hazard fence. We, as you know, we had a, talked about this before, we had a couple incidents at the airport where deer ran out in front of aircraft and got hit. So can cause damage to aircraft. So the FAA says we're gonna put a wildlife hazard fence up. So basically, that what you see in that aqua color, that will be a 10-foot fence with a three-string of barbed wire on top and two feet in the ground. So that would be over a multi-year project, because that'd probably be about a $5 million project, and that'll be funded over three years.
Roy, will that affect the pilots? Does that affect, they won't even notice that, will they?
They won't even notice it. And plus, if you look at it, the public won't even notice it either, because there's areas that are not really a focus of where people driving by would see that fence. It's more on the interior of the airport.
Yes, sir. Does the funding of that in any way affect the new terminal?
No. So this was the progress of the T-hanger facilities in Taxi Way Alpha back in September. This is what it looks like now, all totally completed, all brand-new taxiway. That's looking west. As you can see in the background, too, you can see that the terminal apron was under construction at that point as well. Now, that was under construction, looking, Taxi Way Alpha under construction, looking east. And this is what it looks like now. It's all complete. We also joined this project, too, not only fixed Taxi Way Alpha, but we also fixed all the taxi lanes that were coming out from the, from the T-hangers. A lot of them had different turns and things of that nature. We straightened everything out, so it's just a straight shot from all the T-hangers right into the apron. And this was the ribbon cutting back in, I believe, January. This is Commissioner Dance's first official act as chair, or his first ribbon cutting as chair. So we had a lot of people there, administration. We had, actually, those two people on the end are the FDOT reps that helped get the money for that project. This was the general aviation terminal apron. You can see in there that the concrete apron had already been poured there. We're just waiting to get the new pavement in there. This is what it looks like now. It is completely redone. And what's nice about it now, you can see that dotted area up there with the jets in it. So now we can actually park the jets right in front of the terminal building. And that's the whole purpose of that, of that whole new area will be, when we build the new terminal, the jets will be able to park right in front of the, of the new building. And speaking of new building, later on today, this is the, our new GA terminal. This is the, not a conceptual drawing, this has already been designed. This is what it's gonna look like. Later on today, it'll, for your consideration, we will have the first grant for you to vote on for $3.3 million. So that is what it's gonna look like from the land side. This was gonna look from the, from the air side. So our fuel stats for first quarter, avgas, we sold 34,343 gallons. That's a total of 1,548 fuelings. And Jet A sold 53,000 gallons in a total of 271 gallons. I always like to look at the difference of how much it is, how much more volume jets take than the small airplanes take. So last time, we do, I do listen, believe it or not. I know sometimes the citizens don't believe that I do listen to what they have to say. We do look into things. And one of the things that was brought up was about avgas. And I thought this would be appropriate time. We were just talking about fuel. So avgas, they were, the citizens were saying that the avgas, the lead in the avgas is poisoning children and getting on their homes and things of that nature. But I just want to talk about what avgas is. So avgas is short for aviation gas. It's 100 low lead. It is distinguished by a blue hue. It's an industry standard for reciprocating aircraft engines. What's reciprocating? Any aircraft that runs off a piston-engine aircraft. The higher octane of avgas makes the fuel burn slower and more efficiently, and the lead in avgas helps dissipate the heat and also acts as a lubricant. So it is true. In that backup that one of the citizens brought in last week, it said, "The EPA has determined that lead emissions to air from certain aircraft engines cause or contribute to air pollution, which may be reasonably expected to endanger public health." That's a proven fact. Not gonna fight that, not gonna dispute it. However, the EPA has not given the authority to ban, regulate, or limit aviation fuel. Those are the ones that have to do it. All the aircraft that run off of those aircraft, those are the ones, that is all mandated by the FAA. We don't, we can't say we're not gonna put avgas in our, in our, in our airplanes. Now, there are a couple different, different fuel terms out there right now. One is called the UL94. Not sold that, not sold very well, because it's not, it can't be used in the higher-performance aircraft and can't be used in the older aircraft. But some of the newer aircraft can use it. So, and then there's another one called GAMB, but it has not hit the streets yet. It's been invented, but nobody's making it. So it's not available right now. So I will tell you, the industry has been working towards a safe and smart transition to unleaded fuel. I will tell you, after my 20 years in Marine Corps aviation, when I came to civilian aviation, which was 19 years ago, I heard back then, they said, 100 low lead will not be here in 10 years. Well, here we are 19 years later, and it's still here. Our air traffic control, these are monthly numbers, back in, so you can see where we were, anywhere from 15,000 to 18,000 from January to April. And then also, just wanted to point out, some of the citizens were talking about, there's been a huge uptick in the amount of operations here. So what I did here, I put together a slide that shows all of our operations from 2010 to 2023. And as you'll see, that red line, that, that is the, that is the average line, which is 155,000 operations. So you can see, there's, there's some that are, some years we're higher above that, and some years that we are lower in that number. Again, so we are listening to the, to the citizens. And we actually, I pulled this out of our strategic plan. Our objective is create and implement best practice for customer interaction with, with all county governments and divisions. Objective 3.2, conduct annual customer resident satisfaction surveys. And also, objective 3.4, enhance communication to community by using all available communication methods and tailoring messaging to individual needs. So what, actually, I haven't done this. I, actually, it was done by Jorge, and also our GIS team, right, has created a noise abatement portal. It is not quite done yet. Maybe let Jorge speak on that in a minute. But basically, what it's gonna be, it's gonna be a portal that the, that citizens will be able to go to on the website and actually put in their name, their email address, you know, and put information about what is the complaint, what time was the complaint, what type of aircraft you think it was, all these different things. And then it will send that information to us, and we'll be able to look at it. And then also ask them how they want to be, how they actually want to be contacted as well, once we investigate the complaint. So that's gonna be the, the front page that they're gonna see. Then this is the back page that we're gonna see, and it'll have all this information on there of what they inputted, and then we'll be able to look at what the complaint was and respond to it as well. There also is gonna be a third page, this, I understand, Jorge was telling me, that it's actually gonna have, show like a, like a hotspot area where people, where we're getting the majority of our complaints from as well. I will say, you know, obviously, we do get a lot of complaints from these citizens. we do get a lot of complaints from the citizens that live in the Z and the U section. We also, it's interesting enough, and I know a couple of Commissioners here has also fielded some noise complaint issues from other areas around Flagler County that have nothing to do with the Flagler Executive Airport. For some reason, people think any airplane that's flying in Flagler County originates from Flagler County, or that we have anything to do with that aircraft. And in most cases, we do not. Most states, some of these aircraft aren't even coming to the Flagler Executive Airport. They're just merely flying through. And I won't even say our airspace, because remember, I had a slide on that before, our airspace is Class D airspace, only goes at four nautical miles from the airport and 1,500 feet up. That's our airspace. That's what we are responsible for. Any questions about this noise abatement portal?
So just, it's, it is or is not in operation?
Not.
It's not yet, but it's very close.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners.
Good morning.
The application is the, the, to submit the request or the complaint, it's going to be active right after today. It's going to be active.
Today?
Today. The backend that the employees see to manage the calls and to evaluate and then be able to respond back to the citizen, it'll be active today. The piece that we are still working and is almost done is the heap map where the calls are coming from, the public facing one will be ready sometime this week. So it's all, it's, and then I just want to mention, Taylor Phillips was the person that developed this for us up in GIS. I just want to mention that. Okay?
Good, thank you.
So also this year, we had the 13th Annual Race of the Runways. And so that was a great, a great event at the airport. You know, we have that tagline, run, walk, or crawl. You can do it all on sponsorship with the Rodeo Club of Flagler Beach. First one was in 2012. So the money raised for that go to community projects and scholarships. And then we also had Warbirds Over Flagler, which was another great event. Unfortunately, we did bring it back. It was supposed to be for two days this year. Unfortunately, due to the high winds, I had made the call for public safety to cancel the second day. But we still had a lot of people show up on Saturday, and it was a great event. Look forward to bringing back that again next year. And then upcoming, we have the United Flagler Fourth, a joint event with the City of Palm Coast, Benel, Flagler Beach, Flagler County. This is going to be different this year. All festivities will be on the south side of the airport. Everything will be on the south side of the airport, just where we do Warbirds Over Flagler. We're going to put everything back there. When we split it up, some of the people, we get complaints that people say, "Well, there was no vendors back there. I wanted to hear the, reading a declaration of independence." So we can't do everything in two different places. So we decided to just put everything in one place this year, which will be on the back side of the airport. So on Fort July, the gates won't open at 5:00 PM. There'll be music and food trucks, and then we will have the fireworks at 9:00 PM. So that concludes my presentation. Anyone have any questions for me?
Can you go back to that, your slide early on that shows the flight operation numbers? It's just interesting to me, going back over a decade, we've had, you know, pretty level operations on an average basis. It's not, it's not necessarily grown exponent, it certainly hasn't grown exponentially, and it hasn't grown necessarily in relation to the population. It's just a matter of the operations are pretty much, you know, even keel, other than the fact that it, I mean, they dropped a lot in 2021 because, you know, you wouldn't want to fly a plane to get COVID. But other than that, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah. And also part of that 2021, that was when we also had runway 624 closed. So that was also a project going on there. That also contributed to that as well.
Yeah. I guess as long as you brought that up, 2024, we were in the middle of 2024. How is that, is it looking like it's going to be a little more or stay, stay, stay with the same pattern?
It could be a little more this year. It could be about the same. I don't, I don't really.
Still.
It's
Weather, everything.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's weather, it's just what's going on. It's, it's, there's really no rhyme or reason sometime of what's, of what indicative, what kind of operations we're going to have.
Go next.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Mr. Seeger, in the December 18th meeting, which is where we had the State Guard here, you said, and I'm just going to read it because I typed it out last night, you said, in quotes, "Any airplane in the airspace is controlled by air traffic control tower. It can control every airplane coming in and leaving the airport. If you have eight or nine airplanes practicing touch and goes, the tower doesn't let them do it. They limit it to six aircraft at a time." Then you said, "I know that sounds like a lot, but it could be a lot more depending on the controller. The controller will allow six to eight to practice touch and goes. If there are more than that, they ask them to go somewhere else and come back in 15, 20 minutes." That's what the air, that's the way the air traffic control can enforce noise abatement. But then you said, "The FAA manual says it can't be prohibited by airport sponsor without, touch and goes cannot be prohibited by the airport sponsor without justification." You said, "Capacity is an acceptable reason for prohibiting touch and goes." Then you said, you said, "You don't, you have the authority to cease touch and go operations over Quail Hollow." So I'm confused. If air traffic control can limit touch and goes in the area and can limit it to a, how did you get the number six, first of all? How does air traffic control come up to the number of six as an acceptable amount of people practicing touch and goes in the area?
And with talking to air traffic control tower, the controllers, that's the number they are, that they are comfortable with. Because remember, they don't have radar up there.
Right.
So they're, they, so they, and plus, that's what, that's just a number they're comfortable with controlling, you know, telling what airplanes are, where they're at because they can't see them on a scope. And I said, it depends on what type of controller it is. If a controller is more, has more experience, they're able to do more. But typically, they keep it about six or seven.
But if capacity is a reason that we can control touch and goes, and we have complaints coming in for touch and goes, so many in the air at this, at a time, then the airport controller can control the amount of touch and goes practiced in the Quail Hollow area community.
Right. So capacity. So what I mean by that, so it depends on how good the controller is. Because remember, every, every time you have a longer air, every time those aircraft are stacking up in that big racetrack, if you look at basically what the traffic pattern looks like, is that it really starts putting those aircraft further and further out. So that's what we talk about. They want to keep it closer in, so that way, within the airspace, and not have it drawn far out.
So air traffic control could help with noise abatement by pushing them even further out, over, out of the residential neighborhoods if they wanted to?
And I don't, I'm going to follow you over
So you said that they're comfortable with six, but if we're having issues and with noise issues and people complaining of touch and goes and being in their airspace of 300 feet, 600 feet, whatever the number is, the air traffic controller could tell them to go and practice touch and goes elsewhere. He has that ability.
No. What I'm saying is, when they have the capacity,
Right.
What that a capacity is, when the people are asking, the pilots are asking to do the touch and goes, they're doing as much as they can.
Right.
They just can't say, "Oh, we're at capacity. We have one." If that's what you're trying, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, but he, he can say it for six. Why can't he say it for one? What I'm saying is, why, what makes his capacity that he can say, "Hey, six or eight, come back in 15 and 20 minutes?" If we're also saying, "I can't control the airspace above me, and I can't control who's practicing touch and goes," but at the same time, air traffic control is saying, "On the other hand, I can control up to six in the airspace practicing touch and goes."
It's a malice.
How, how is that like, how is it we are comfortable with six, but then we're also saying on the other hand that we can't control people practicing touch and goes? How is it air traffic control can control six people in the airspace practicing touch and goes over people's houses, but at the same breath, we're telling the people that are complaining that we can't limit the practice of touch and goes in that airspace?
Again, the controller is the ones that say, how many they can, I know you get that. So that's what they're comfortable with. And we say capacity of what they're, what they are comfortable with controlling.
Right.
So they would not feel reasonable to say, "We're only comfortable doing with one aircraft in a pattern." That's not reasonable.
It just shows me though, that the air traffic control could, could limit capacity. I mean, when you've got six or eight people and you tell them to come back in 15 or 20 minutes to practice touch and goes, they can, they do have some enforcement abilities in, over those residential neighborhoods.
What's, what is reasonable? And they believe, based on what their experience is, that somebody could reasonably and with the correct capacity to do six or seven, somebody with more experience could do more.
So, and who, who, who regulates the, the air traffic controllers? Not you?
No.
Right? No. They're regulated by what?
They're regulated by the FAA.
By the FAA. Okay. All right. So then the other thing, when they, they came in here to address the lead concern. So the EPA says that they're going to be coming out with their health endangerment findings on lead this fall. Their ruling is expected, and I read through some of the ruling that they're drafting, a regulation on leaded fuel, including air control, control testing, air quality control testing, apologize. And so you're probably, because you're so familiar with air stuff, you know about Broward County, right? So you know that what's going on in Broward County with the county commission that owns the airport there in North Perry. So North Perry is found to have a very high ranking lead emissions because of all the flight schools. They have 11 flight schools there. So with the regulations the EPA is going to set this fall, what is that going to do for the county in terms of having to test for air, air quality, things for the residents? They're talking about having to test the grounds around the residencies. And I, and I noticed, we, in your right, the EPA does control cell of, of gas, but the county commissions are already discussing, and several have already done so, banning lead fuel sold at their own airport because of what's coming down the pipe from the EPA, so that they don't have to deal with the headache of, of testing and, and the concerns. So what are we going to do to get, what are we going to need to do to, when those findings come out from the EPA and they have regulations for us to implement, what is, what are we going to do? What's the plan for that? We have to wait for the findings?
I have to wait for the findings, right? I mean, I don't know what the APA is going to come and say, "This is what we want you to do." I'd almost put it the same way what's been, just, have you ever followed what's going on with PFOS? You follow with that?
No.
So what PFOS is, is a big thing that's going on in the state legislative. And basically what PFOS is, it's a, it's a, it's a chemical found in A triple F, right? So in firefighting. A lot of airports have firefighting apparatuses on there because Airport 135 airports, and they have to use this foam. And so basically this PFOS chemical has got, it's one of those forever chemicals, can't get rid of it. It's got into the ground system. And it's getting into groundwater, and there's going to be a big, have to be a big cleanup on that. So the, actually, airports have been getting legislative saying, "Listen, we're not the ones saying you have to use PFOS. It is the FAA that says you have to use PFOS. It is the FAA that says you have to use 100 low lead." That is what the fuel, so back to that point, that is why, that's the fuel that is mandated to be used in reciprocating engines. So, so I would like to also tell you, I am, so Bavard, they do, they have 11 flight schools there. They also do about 340,000 operations, lots of operations there. But also, you know, I don't know what was going on at that airport many, many years ago. Don't have no idea. I will tell you, just recently, a friend of mine runs a Naples airport, very busy airport, lots of jet traffic. He just recently did a study. He did air study, he did a water study, and did a soil study. And you know what he found? Nil. Nothing was lead on his airport. Instantly enough, he actually said, "Let's take this a step further. Let me test the water that's coming in from our city." And they did find lead in the city water. So. So I don't know if, if our airport has an issue.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think I'm coming at it at a point that we have an issue or anything like that. What are we going to do to proactively get ready for the EPA's requirements of people who sell lead, lead, like, you know, you're going to have some testing requirements.
Right. So we, you know, when it comes after the FAA, when it comes after the EPA, and I will tell you, so they talked about that the FAA wants to have a new fuel, you know, by 2030. Whether it's going to happen or not, I don't know. But it's, again, we're, whatever we're mandated to do, obviously we'll do.
Will that come out of your enterprise fund if there's mandates for that, or how would that
Absolutely. Right.
Yeah. So I, I, I had, so I go back to the, the portal's good, and I think that's a step. But how do we really, that portal's going to fill up really quick, and they're all going to get the same answer. We can't control blah, blah, blah. Or whatever we're going to end up telling them. And so I don't know between the EPA coming out with, with, suspected to come out with some findings that are going to have regulations around public airports and things for us to do, and then, you know, the, the touch and goes and things like that. I don't know, you know, I'll say it one more time. I don't know if it behooves us, when those findings come out, to have maybe a one-time, one-time advisory committee, just for four meetings or something like that, just to kind of address, you know, what we're going to do, what would be in the best concern of the residents. The same thing about the noise abatement. Would it help us to go back to an advisory committee for four meetings, not forever, to, to help the noise abatement issue? Just to make sure that, you know, the residents have a level of comfort that it's been looked at again? I mean, that's where I'm at. I, I don't see the harm in that if it's a short-term advisory council, just to take a look at it one more time.
Commissioner, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So what, what do you, what do you think we're not doing?
So my, my concern is, when I hear that the, the tower has the ability to push people out from practicing touch and goes, "Ah, I'll take six in, and I'll take three in, come back in 20 minutes." How is somebody supposed to get the level of comfort that when you turn around and tell them in the same breath, "I can't control the air, and I can't control them practicing touch and goes around your house," but the tower can control the touch and goes, or the tower can push them out for 20 minutes, or the power
Because we're at capacity.
Right.
That's why. It's not like they're doing one, and then they're pushing everybody out. They're doing as many as they are comfortably handling.
So I'll, so I'll ask you this question. So do they practice touch and goes at every airport? Daytona Beach practices, allows practicing of touch and goes?
Well, and again, yeah, they do, but they probably don't practice it a lot there because it's a commercial service airport.
That's right.
Right? So, yeah, so you want to talk about St. Augustine, New Smyrna, Flagler, Ormond Beach, you go down the coast. It is the same thing. This, this problem that we have is not unique to Flagler County. It is everywhere. Because, we talked about this before, the, you know, Florida is the mecca of flight training. We have a lot of beautiful weather. So people come here to learn to fly.
But most of those airports don't have so much residential coming in around them like ours. And I mean, that's the uniqueness of your airport, right? You've got a lot of residential being
Not all the time. New Smyrna has it. Ormond Beach has a couple as well. St. Augustine has it. Good Lord, look at Naples. You, you see it everywhere. I would, I wouldn't say there's very few. I mean, the only airport GA aircraft thing right off the top of my head, even when I ran the small Marion County in the airport, which I had maybe handful houses anywhere near the airport, they complained.
What, what are you going to do when the portal just, I mean, is it comes in at real time? So you're going to have staffing for that, right? Or is it going to be a real time response back to the portal?
We're going to respond as quickly, as quickly as we can.
Right.
But also too, you know, one of the things too, when I looked at those, all the information, that backup information that they were giving us, they're complaining about airplanes that are flying normal times of the day. So, I mean, at what point, I mean, at the end of the day, we can't tell, we're a public use airport. We can't tell airplanes they can't utilize our airport, cut and dry. And if you, I actually don't know this ever got put into record. I made a copy of it, just because I do want to put it in the record. But the, one of the persons here, Gina Weiss, is the one that's very vocal, right? She did get a response, right? She responded, and the regional FAA responded to her. Would you like me to read? Have you all remember reading that?
We've read it.
What's that?
I read it.
You've read it?
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to put it in the records. I don't think it ever got put in the record. But basically, at the very, just want to read one sentence. It says, "Due to your home proximity to Finn and direct alignment with runway 624, noise from aircraft in your area is unavoidable." I'm the airport director. I don't make the rules. I try to do the best of what I can for the citizens. If there was something I could do, I would do it.
So let me make a point, right? There's, every once in a while, on a schedule, the airport master plan gets updated. And that's coming in '25, as I understand. So as, just like with all the other updates that we're doing, the comp plan, land development code, and different things, there'll be opportunities for public input during the update of the master plan.
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, from noise abatement, pollution, other things from the airport, those will probably have findings back from FAA on, on the other lead issues and testing. So that'll be incorporated. But I think the, opening up the master plan and revising it is an opportunity for the public to get input into that, into the updating, you know, our master plan for the airport. And as far as the portal goes, I think it's a great, it's a great step, at least in, in taking accountability for the complaints that are coming in. I remember having discussions with administration. I mean, we I mean, we can, you know, if we can keep track of feral pigs, we can keep track of complaints and from the airport. And I think this is the proper step. There's, out of the complaints, we need to know how many are justified and how many are not. I mean, the only way we can do that is with an accurate portal to take in those complaints, not email, but an accurate portal, and then being able to identify and making sure that they're following, are they or are they not following the voluntary procedures? Are they doing anything unsafe? And that way, at least, we will be able to have accountability to those calls that are coming in and verify we've got processes in place. If people are operating outside the bounds of the voluntary guidelines of being able to follow up with the flight schools. And at least if there's patterns, they, you know, we can, we can direct that to them.
I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. You know, again, I do that from time to time. I'll look at what's going on. Matter of fact, it was like last week, I saw that Phoenix East from Daytona, another one that's based at airport, they had a lot of, there was probably about 11 aircraft that did some touch and goes during our voluntary noise abatement procedures. So, I called them, gave them a phone call. And I just said, hey, what's going on? I said, we sat down, you agreed to these rules. So, why aren't you following them? And then he says, well, and so, I don't know. And so, anyhow, so basically, I made a copy of it and spelled it all out and sent it to them. And since that time, it has decreased again. So, I mean, that's the things that we do do. We do, I do reach out to these different flight schools, talk about it, remind them of voluntary noise abatement again. They're voluntary, and we do appreciate that when they do abide by them as well.
In the portal, will we be tracking where these flights originated from, their origination?
No. No, I can look at it. Now, I could look at that, because I'll know the tail number, and I could look at it.
Well, that's what I say by tail number. So, can we, can we create that in the portal, where they originate from?
It'll be something internal on the backend, probably. The, I doubt that the public are going to know.
Not the public, but I mean, on the backend, maybe a, I think everybody thinks all the flights originate here, technically.
We're going to know. I mean, just because, well, if it's Embry-Riddle, we know where that originates from. If it's Phoenix East, we know where that originates from. If it's Epic, so we know where they all originate from. We know what flight schools they're from.
It may be helpful for you to track on your end where they originate from, so that people understand if it is, in fact, Phoenix out of Daytona or Embry-Riddle and just a few. Because always their argument comes back to it being our flight schools, the two flight schools here that are originating it.
And we don't have. We have a very, we have a, we have a small flight, we have Phoenix East here. They have a handful of airplanes, five or six airplanes, and we have teams in flight. And they have three airplanes.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion. I think it might be beneficial to track your origination point, so, you know, to have yours worth of data to point to if that's where they're coming from versus the ones that we host.
And we could. We know the numbers for the, right, for the schools' planes that are anchored here? Or do they rotate them in and out?
I mean, they, they do push them in and out, but we do keep up with that though.
All right, very good. Anybody else?
I just want you to leave my feral pigs alone.
You know, and Commissioner, one last thing, what I really would like to see, and I don't know if it's the, the commission can work with this, the Palm Coast Commission, but there's a lot more houses being built in our community, right? And they're right there by the airport. They're going to be over off of Colbert, and they're going to be in that flight pattern. It would really be nice if they, if the city of Palm Coast adopted something that said, hey, this is, just beware, this area, you're going to hear airplanes.
Should they not have put in the Florida statutes into their land? Have they done that regarding where housing is? And I don't think they have.
No.
No, they never bothered to put that into their land development code, the Florida statutes regarding housing around airport. And now, the Live Local Act actually has a piece in it as well, keeping housing off the airport areas that have affordable housing, so.
Yeah, and we fought for that very hard with Fort Airport Council.
Affordable housing can't go near an airport, but everything else can. So, and I know that Adam, you've sent it to them. We need to update our own. It was supposed to be done in 2016. So, Adam has sent it to them. But you're right, I mean, it's just as much the creation of housing by them, it's not our housing.
Right.
Yeah.
But we'll get to complaints.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, great.
Anything else? Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to community outreach. This is a 30-minute time period. It's been allocated for public comment. On any consent agenda item or topic not on the agenda, each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the chair. So, at this time, we'll open up for public comment, come up to the podium.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
My name is John Furlong. I moved into Flagler County two years ago. I had the pleasure of meeting most of you a couple of weeks ago before the commissioners' meeting. I joined the association called the CSPOA a couple of months ago, Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers. I am the director for Flagler County. I work with Bill Mitchell, who's the director for Florida. I was very proud to understand that Flagler County is known as a constitutional county, that between the sheriff's office, this commission, and our supervisor of elections, we have adopted a resolution to be a constitutional county. I can't tell you how proud I am to live in this county with this kind of statute and what we're doing. I just want to touch base with you folks that I'll be meeting with Sheriff Staley, with Bill Mitchell, in a couple of weeks, for the first time. I haven't met the man personally yet, to go over the resolution that has been passed and what we're looking to move forward to. It's kind of like renew our wedding vows, see what we're going to do moving forward with the world and the state it is, to protect the citizens and to protect our constitutional rights here in the county. We're looking to build a template, not only for Flagler County, but for the state of Florida. Forty-four out of 67 counties in the state are now known as constitutional counties, which is the highest percentage anywhere in the nation. We're trying to set the tone for the rest of the world of what's going on to protect the citizens with what's coming down the pike or what could come down the pike, to protect the citizens and the constitutional rights of all of us. I just want to say thank you very much for what you've done. After, I handed out the resolution to you folks a couple of weeks ago. I don't think I met Mr. O'Brien. I don't think he was at the dais yet. But I wish you'd take a look at that, because after we have the meeting with Sheriff Staley, we love your thoughts and ideas on this resolution, if we can move it forward even further. Or I don't understand how to get anything on an agenda or anything like that, so I'm going to wait on that until I know what we can do. And please, any feedback you folks have, we greatly appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you very, very much for what you do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment.
Have a wonderful day.
Next speaker? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring you back to the dais. Is there any board comments on consent that anybody would like to bring forward?
No, sir.
I am going to ask to pull one.
Okay, I'll be right back with you.
Thank you, sir.
I had a couple of questions. I'm not against it. I didn't really want to debate it, but I don't know if I should pull it or just add some questions on item 7C for Joe.
You can make the comments, or you can pull it when the next?
Yeah, I'll just pull it, just so I can ask the questions.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't have any other comments. Any comments?
No.
All right, so items to further discussion that to be pulled from consent?
No, sir.
7J.
7J.
I just have more questions than anything.
That is consideration to approve updates to the county's purchasing manual, 7J. All right, so I'll make 7J. And Commissioner O'Brien?
7C.
7C. Consideration of approval expenditures for home rehabilitation under ship, okay?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda, with the exception of 7C and 7J.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Sullivan, for approval of consent minus 7C and 7J. All those in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to 7C. Consideration of approval for expenditures over $50,000 for home rehabilitation under the ship program. Mr. Haggett, do you want to come up? And Devery?
Sorry, guys, I'm not trying to bushwhack you.
No, please, good morning.
But I just, you know, in reading through the item, I was struck by some of the costs, the itemized costs from the contractor. And I just didn't understand or know whether, like, for example, all the appliances, those numbers really caught me because they seem very high. So, I didn't understand whether that is, once it's awarded, that that, those are the numbers you use, or whether if they, if they buy, you know, items and they don't spend as much as budgeted, does that, you know, not get, you know, how does all that work? I just, I just would like a clarification on that.
Sure, actually, I'll let Devery step in, because she knows the nuts and bolts of all these quotes and procedures there.
Thank you, Debbie Paradaski, Housing Services Program Manager. What we do is, we do a cost estimate for those, and then we put it out to our available contractors, and then they submit the bids, and that's what we have. We did, I think, get some cost lower, some of the appliances I knew with the oven, it may be like a front ones to improve accessibility for the homeowner. But I think we did get some of the cost lower once they submit the bids. They've been coming in high all across the state of Florida, so.
It just, again, I've been doing a lot of shopping lately for appliances and house things, and those numbers just seem awful, awful high. But if that's not what's actually spent, and it's, you know, if we're just not automatically writing a check for those amounts, I certainly understand that, so.
Well, it would be those amounts, but we do do an inspection. And so, that's going to include the contractor's profit and overhead and labor. So, we're not doing anything with that. And then we have an interim inspection, and we check all the permits, and then we have a final inspection, and then the homeowner signs off on all of those.
And I imagine your hands are tied, because if you don't have bids, then you have to accept what's, what's coming in the door.
Yes, and this one even came in.
Pass completely, I guess, correct?
Yes, in order to get these done on time. So, we did try to get some of the cost even lower than what was originally presented on this one, and this one was the lowest of the contractors that submitted bids.
I will add, we are always, and actually, making a concerted effort now to bring in more contractors, so we can add more diversity to that pool and more competition on those costs. I think that's been one of the struggles we've had the past few years, is we only have less than a handful of contractors that we can tap into for that work. So, it's a little bit of a.
Yes, I agree, Joe. I think that's, that's probably one of the biggest challenges, because all the other contractors, everybody's busy, and there's just not a lot of desire to do this kind of work too. So, understand.
Bit of a challenge, but yes, absolutely. We'll be cognizant of those, yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you for the, for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7C.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. This is on item 7C. I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody wish to address the board? Have any questions on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring you back. Call the question. All those in favor, 7C, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll move to 7J. 7J is consideration to approve updates to the county's purchasing manual.
Hello, hello.
Good morning, Chairman Dence and Commissioners. Robert Rounds, the Procurement Contracts and Service Manager.
I have some questions, and I know you don't have it in front of you, but the, they're just, mine are section six, the women minority business enterprises vendor preference.
Yes.
I noticed, I was reading through the state of Florida's program for this, the certified business program that they have. They have veterans. Why are veterans excluded from ours? They actually have a, and I noticed it's not listed here, you have to be, your certification has to be valid for these following places. We have the Florida Department of Transportation, the state of Florida Office of Supplier Diversity. Well, the state of Florida has a certified business enterprise vendor directory with women minority, but they also include veterans. So, is there a reason we don't list veterans? Or was there a reason we don't mimic the states?
To be honest, that could be a mistake. I mean, we, I thought we had veterans in there, so what we can do, we actually have a couple more updates to do, so we will make sure that we mimic what the state has.
Yeah, and just, and let you know that they have their own directory, because we listed some of their directories, but we missed the certified business enterprise vendor directory they have. And that's where they put their women minority and veterans. And I was just asking about why would the veterans might have been excluded?
No, no, we would definitely, I'm a veteran, so we would definitely.
I would just think we should mimic what the state does, at least on this. And I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not. I don't.
No, we can fix that. No problem.
And then the, sorry, the number, the section 10, environmental and energy efficient, is that a new section? Because I wasn't sure with the coloring.
Yes, that is a new section, and actually, Pia Thomas requested that. St. Johns County put it in theirs. Orange County has it, so it's something new. So, we kind of mimicked what St. Johns has, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, I saw it was copied from, so is it, so I look at that, and it talks about like, we're, do we have an actual policy of what we are going to buy that's, the policy aims to institutionalize sustainability preferable decision-making into the county's procurement process. We would leverage substantial buying power benefiting local and global governments while advancing the county's sustainability and resiliency goals. The policy will assist in the county in procuring sustainable goods and services by developing sustainability specification guidance, providing training resources and consulting. Have we done that yet?
We have not, since we just added it to the policy, but that is something that we're definitely going to look forward to.
Okay, yeah, because I just thought with this stuck in there, it didn't really say what we were going to make resilient and sustainable, and, or like, are we going to mandate that we go to electric or with a rolling stock? I didn't know. There's nothing, it's very vague, so that's, I'm wondering why we stuck it in there.
Yeah, it's very, well, number one, we stuck it in there because it's now going to be required.
Okay.
And two, you know, we're in the beginning stages. We will look at, you know, the chemicals we buy to clean, every, we're going to need to look at everything environmentally, so.
Okay.
The addition was to get it in there.
What required it? What's, what's the requirement, where's the requirement come from?
I believe it's the state, but I believe also, I know we put it in there for FDOT, maybe? So, I can do some more research.
Yeah, I was just, just curious, because it didn't really blow out and specify what that meant, you know? Like, are we rolling our stock over to, you know, whatever? So, and that was it on that. And then my final thing, and this is just a, just a purely in question, we are changing And then my final thing, and this is just a purely in question, we are changing the authorities, and I'm not, not where I was last year, the authorities, less than, from 25,000, the left approval, less than 50,000, the procurement managers can do that. The county administrator now has greater than 50, up to 100,000 authority, and then over 100,000 comes to the Board of County Commission. Is there, you tell me, because I'm relatively new in this, is there a way to bucket the items that were approved just as like a transparency list somewhere--
Sure.
--in those 50 to 100,000 on a monthly basis? Like, here's what county administrator approved in that bucket?
Yeah, just to give you a little more detail on that, we raised it, well, we're asking to raise it from 50 to 100 because in the past 20 years, 20 years ago, 50,000, you now need 90. So we're trying to keep up--
Understood.
Yeah. So what we can do is everything between 50 and 100, it'll have to be approved by administration. It'll either be following a contract, piggyback, or three quotes. We can keep track of everything in that range if you want, and submit it quarterly, however you want to see it.
Yeah, I would just like to see what projects fell into that, and then the velocity of it. How many times did 100,000 get approved outside of the board? What for, you know, how many, is it millions?
I mean, to be honest, and since I've been here, there's only been a couple of things in that range. The majority is shipped.
Yeah.
You guys have seen a $78,000 tractor, you know, so there's, which was off a policy, so we can keep track if that's what you like.
Yeah, I'm just asking to keep track of it, if I case, I say, hey, can we just see that on a quarterly basis, just so we know what else is out there?
Yep, everything is--
And that's up to the, I don't know if any consensus for that. That's just my thought on it.
Okay.
Chair.
That bucket.
Does anybody have any desire to look at that information, too, or just whenever you feel like looking, you can always call, you can always ask.
I, no, I know, I just didn't know if they're going to have a place to track it, or--
I usually go through the revenue and expenditures, you know, that we have available to us. It's not the same thing, I know, but it still gives me a feeling for what we're spending our money on, whether it's $10 or--
Well, I read the clerk thing every month, but I just was thinking, like, can, you know, I mean, for velocity's sake, I mean, you could approve, it's just a curiosity. I may, I may at some point pop in and ask for that.
We'll keep it just for you, don't worry.
If it makes it easier for you to--
Yeah.
Just, you know, to track it now, or whatever.
No, we'll track it. Not a problem.
That's it.
That's where I was going, is just, everybody has the opportunity to go in there and pull those things up and--
That's right. I'll let you know now, I may pop in and ask for that, if it's easier for me to say it now.
No problem, we'll keep track of it.
And how do you, how do we want to handle some of the updates? Is this something you want to push for a month, or is everybody comfortable with progressing through the manual?
I think I was worried more about the veterans, like, should we really mimic the state's program and make sure we have that list in there where they keep track? Because that, long time ago, I used to investigate fraud in this space, and a lot of that is not minority or business law, and they literally, yeah, so, so having the state verify, you know, those lists that you gave, they have verified subcontractors and everything to, there's a bigger vetting process now.
No, I actually, I actually apologize. We missed that. We will definitely make sure it's up to date.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we approve this item with the proviso that they come back within a month with the addition of the language for veterans and any other adjustments that need to be made.
Yeah, I think the word was mimicking the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can send you guys that link, too, if you need it, because there's, it's the certified business enterprise vendor directory of the state.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. This is on 7J, the updates to the purchasing manual. I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody in the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. I'll call the question. All those in favor of 7J signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. We'll move on to general business. This is presentations in general business, limited to 15 minutes with public comment limited to three minutes per speaker. This is a, the first item is selection of the 2024 Value Adjustment Board Chair requested by our county attorney's office. So, Mr. Moylan, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chair. This is a rather simple item. We received a memo from the General Counsel's Office of the Department of Revenue advising us that the county commission should choose the chair of the value adjustment board as opposed to the value adjustment board picking its own chair. So on the value adjustment board, we have two commissioners, we have a school board member, and we have two citizen members. And I'm not even positive, is it you, Commissioner Sullivan? Are you--
I did it for a number of years, but not now.
Us.
It's Commissioner Pennington and myself.
Okay, so I would just ask that the board this morning, by motion and a vote, choose who would like to serve as chair.
So just, I served because I think you got injured the last time, so if you mind, I don't make a motion, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, to a degree, we've done that in the past because when we select our committee assignments each year, the board does approve the person who's going to be on the value adjustment board from the commission. So that doesn't cover that?
No, I think they're specifically saying, under the statute, we should select the chairman of that value adjustment board along with our, who's going to serve.
The chairman will be a commissioner, and we just have to figure out which of the two commissioners will be--
Correct, correct, yes.
Because it's always, you know, the commissioner's going to be the chair. The question is, we put--
Which one?
--a primary and an alternate.
Yes.
And what we've been doing in the past is do a year and then keep moving along. Okay, I mean, I don't think it's any big deal, but I, it seems like--
So are you all remaining?
Yeah, yes, we are for this year, so. Is it okay for me to make the motion, or since I'm on that board, or does any--
That's fine.
I'll just, because I cheered a lot, I'll make a motion to, if it's okay with you, approve Commissioner Hanson as chair of the value adjustment board.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. I'll open up for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the commissioner? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Have a motion by Commissioner Pennington, seconded by Commissioner Hanson, to make Commissioner Hanson the chair of the value adjustment board. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Hanson, for stepping up to duty.
And don't break your elbow now.
As Dave will say, and it's actually a very interesting board, it really is. You know, things that come up in front of us are pretty interesting, so.
That's this again, right?
All right, next item. This is 8B, consideration of an amendment to the plat addendum and subdivision plat for Airport Road Hunters Ridge Boulevard Extension to add signage to the list of permitted uses within the roundabout Track 10. Mr. Mangle.
Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director. So we have the graphic here that you'd seen before, two sign locations heading on your eastbound, westbound sides of the roundabout, also known as Track 10, within the plat, Airport Road Hunters Ridge Boulevard Extension. And then here's the graphic we had previously that we had displayed, showing, I think this was the west location, and then this was the east location, showing both of those can give you an idea of scale. There are people shown within that, along with the signage that's there. And then options that didn't have in there before, but I went ahead and decided this time I'll put in a denial and a continuance also, where before we had continuants from the May 20th meeting. You saw the correspondence that we had, that's been added to the record. We also have present today Cindy Kendrick with DR Horton, also John Cash with the, he's the contractor for the sign. You saw them also mentioned within the emails, so that one of the things I think to emphasize from this side of DR Horton is that this is important for them because it's part of their identity. It's part of what we've already put in as part of the CDD, as part of their rebranding for their area, and so they're saying that it's critical for that, and that's the reason why you have Ms. Kendrick here to talk about that. And then the sign contractors here, where he's mentioned in his emails, you saw it, where he can make these dimmable, he can, there's a lot you can do with the LEDs, with the internal lighting, and so he'll talk more directly about that if you have any questions on that. Looks like you've got photos, and we were going to have the Elmo set up for our contractor and our folks here otherwise, but it looks like our commissioners are writing information.
No, I went. I wanted to share the photos and give them, I went, because I'd said I would go to take a look at it, so I thought maybe since they're here, maybe they could tell us how this will improve. I don't know if Carlos is going to put them up, or--
He's got it coming, yeah.
I guess something happened out there. Are you aware of what happened there? It's in two areas, so I guess someone had an accident. It's a very dark, long, winding road into that neighborhood-- Yeah. --with no lighting. And is this the first time, do you know, that they've hit the roundabout?
First, Cindy Kendrick with DR Horton. I am not aware of any prior accidents, just this one. I've been with the company for three years this past month. So our desire is to bring improvements to this area. Before the accident, the railing needed replacing, some of the stone around the roundabout needed replacing, landscape improvements, and as you have said, it is dark.
It's a very dark road into there.
And our development, we came in under the Hunters Ridge, and they have entry signage, but our company chose to split off, do separate master HOA, separate CDD. The Hunters Ridge HOA will continue to own, we are just taking maintenance responsibilities, so.
For the signage or the wall?
For the roundabout.
For the roundabout, okay.
Yes, for that tract of the roundabout, which we did a separate sketch and description to distinguish that. There's actually a license agreement in place.
Okay, so will the metal, meddling come down for the sign, or?
No, it'll remain. The sign is just an addition.
It looks like the signage may prevent accidents like this.
It got hit in two places, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it got hit on the backside and the front side by two different cars.
As you have said, it is dark, and I, that is our hope, is to improve the lighting standards.
Make it safer, yeah.
Yes, and to make it a safer community. And because, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the overall master plan for this community, so we have two pods, I believe, that are on the ground for our homes, but right now just the individual pods have the signage. We have no welcome for the overall community for potential homeowners. So that's our desire.
Adam, the road coming into that, is that a public road, or is that a private belonging to--
HOA.
The HOA? Yeah, it has no lighting on it either at night, and so it's like, I think the first image had it, it's like a big winding road, and then there's a island, I think I took a picture of the island somewhere. Someone hit the island, too. Turn it up. I know, I know, I think, I think lighting, not just in the roundabout, but in the entrance ways--
As the pods come on and the different community, lighting will come.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to share that. You guys, yes, I told you I'd go, I went.
The only comments I'll bring up is, in talking with my community traffic safety team folk from DOT is, you know, is, the roundabout is not the location for signage, it is not the location for distractions. It is, it is, if lighting is the issue, install proper lighting for the roundabout. As you'll see, in all the roundabouts that are being installed in the county at Old Dixie or at Matanzas Woods, there's an abundance of lighting, and it's all proper DOT lighting from above that highlights the area. That's the solution, not a sign in the middle of the roundabout that's lit, and that's distracting, so if you're going to--
I don't think the signage was the solution to the car accident. We submitted for the sign, and car accidents happened after. So we've been, we've been in coordination with staff for months on how best to amend the language to permit signage. We do have our contractor here to speak to your lighting concerns, and FDOT standards were not opposed to safety, but the signage wasn't proposed to fix the overall issue.
Well, the impression is, even from comments here, is that the sign's going to improve safety.
It's going to bring lighting there, you are, yeah, we do propose lighting with the permit, and as Commissioner Hanson, am I pronouncing this correct? I believe they are speaking to the accidents that have happened, what, within two months of each other? I don't know, it's dark right now.
Right, but this isn't designed to improve safety, you just said.
I said, we're not coming in to make conditions worse. I know that you're opposed to just signage being in the roundabout, but if you want to talk about lighting standards and what we can do to make you feel more comfortable, we have our contractor here.
Right, but it's not signage-related, signage--
It is signage, it's a part of our signage package, it's one in the same, they're being permitted together.
Mr. Cash?
You state your name?
My name's John Cash with Graphic Reception.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. So we've done some studies on visibility. Signage is also about visibility and identification.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to speak into the microphone, we're not picking you up there. Thank you.
In our world, signage is about visibility, wayfinding, public safety as well. When given this opportunity, you know, we like to create icons and markers for entities. We think this is nice, we created an identity for the community, and then we found out about the accidents. And we felt that this also helps create a marker that's visible from, you know, up to a quarter to a half mile away as you come to the turnaround. I also work DOT projects, and turnaround graphics are more in your face. They're the large five, six-foot Chevron panels with reflective graphics, not as aesthetically nice. This does the same thing in that respect, it creates a visual barrier to something you don't drive through. In terms of the lighting effects and what we can achieve, we can dial things back so they're not as brilliant and create a visual obstruction for eye contrast and lighting at night when you're driving. So there are ways to temp down or change the lighting temperature of the graphics. We work with Dark Sky in Osceola County, we work Coastal, or FWC, and the Turtles, we always called it the Turtles, but in terms of amber lighting and lighting temperature, we can control these things as well as the dimmability of the graphic. It's basically what would be approved and what everyone wants at the end of the day, we're here to perform that.
Okay, any questions?
So every time, should this continue, the HOA has to pay for the accidents on this wall, is that right? The CDD? Okay.
CDD will cover it under the license agreement that we currently have in place.
Okay, through an insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll pass.
Who is the licensed professional, be it engineer or other licensed professional that is signing and putting their license on the line to install this and approving this in the median?
In terms of the engineering for permitting, we use an associate that is licensed in this state to seal the drawings for permitting purposes. The installation companies are licensed and insured to do these installations based on the permitting requirements and, of course, their protocols.
Right, the engineer, though, that's signing and sealing the construction drawings is not the same as the engineer that would be signing and sealing the site plan that puts this in the center of a roundabout and is putting their license on the line that this is a safe location.
County to county rules vary for sealing site plans. If the county requires a site plan to be sealed for this purpose, the same engineer seals that site plan.
I haven't seen a site plan sealed, just the construction drawings.
I'm sorry, again, when we get to the point where we're approved to move forward in our permitting review, that's when we submit these drawings for a final. We've already provided, we did not understand this process in the beginning, so we had our drawings sealed. The county requiring sealed site plans, we can provide that as well.
Okay.
Emphasize for the record, the request is to amend the plat to allow signage in a tract. Then we get a permit. Y'all aren't approving a permit. Y'all are approving an amendment to the plat that allows signage to be placed within Track 10. And then whatever we need for the permit, we'll require for the permit. Thank you.
And, yes, sir.
I can't help but think that this sign, if you, if we're trying to make the case that it's going to be dangerous or whatever, I think that's a specious argument. I think that no matter what, this is going to improve safety on that, because it's a great big roundabout, it's not a small roundabout, it's a great big roundabout. And that's going to be placed where roads come into the roundabout, so they're going to see the wall. They're not going to be able to miss that. It's a, so I think, I think at a minimum, it's a great improvements to safety on the, for that roundabout. And I agree with the chair that we absolutely have to have more lighting on the roads leading into that. That has to be part of this.
I caution us saying that this is about safety, because this is just about a sign right now, and I don't know that, what that thing's going to do if the rest of the road's dark and that island's dark, and, and, yeah, I just, I don't know. It's, I've been out there twice now, I went out in the dark, it's really, really bad. So, and I know that there's nothing we can do about it now, so I hope that you get more lighting out there. I don't know that this is going to save people from going through a wall, so I'm just going to look at it purely from it being a sign, being added to this development. That's how I view it. Because I don't want to say that that's for safety.
Right. I'm not, I'm not in favor, I just don't think the roundabout is the place for signage, I'm not, I'm not in favor, I just don't think the roundabout is the place for signage, but that could be at the minority. If anybody is ready to put a motion.
I'll put a motion on the floor to approve item 8B, consideration of amendment to the plat, addendum and subdivision plat for Airport Road Hunters Ridge Boulevard Extension to add signage to the list of permitted uses within the roundabout, tract 10.
A motion by Commissioner Sullivan, second. And a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any additional questions? Open up for public comment, anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? State your name.
Good morning Commissioners, Jake Barron, U.S. Capitol Alliance. I just want to make one comment about what Ms. Pennington said. So, this is the western side of the roundabout, this is a maintenance access. So as you go in there, that's where the pump is.
She said two accidents, I wasn't sure.
Yeah. The other thing is, I read the sheriff's report and we heard about what happened. And the sheriff stated, at least to the HOA, that, he said the only reason he felt that this woman was alive was because she went totally limp like a fish, because she was drunk. So, if you look at the accident, you look how she took out.
She would have died if she wasn't drunk, is that what?
Well, what he's saying is that, obviously she was out of her mind, that she was completely limp, and no amount of lighting is gonna help somebody who's out cold. But when you're out there, you'll see that these barriers are situated so that somebody coming in from the rightmost lane, meaning going westward, would be held within their lane. And obviously, that's not what happened, they went on the other side of the road, hit it, and then if you look at the tracks, the car was completely sideways.
I saw that.
Yeah, it was, it was just a crazy freak, freak accident in my opinion.
And I think that's why I don't want to, I'm cautious, I don't want anyone to assume this is for safety. I mean, so you hit a wall, you're gonna, you could die. I'm not sure, you know, but there is absolutely no lighting on that road coming in. And I think that's, to Mr. Dance's point, is he's saying, you know, this is, this could be a distraction, I mean, that's a lit up black, I mean, I don't know, you know, are you still gonna see that wall?
So around the roundabout, there are four light posts on, well, I guess it's a circle, but on all four corners.
Yeah, I saw.
There are light posts. And as we've discussed previously when we're talking about other subdivisions, it is within the plans that we will be bringing additional lighting. We've had members of the community on one hand saying it's dark, on the other hand saying that it's a drag strip. And there's been debate as to which way is the right way to go, in terms of negating the drag strip, putting in lighting, would it help or sort of make it more of the drag? Okay, that's.
I could see that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
How you doing? Steve Houck with Graphic Perception, John's partner. Roundabouts are typically used for enhancing communities, they're not usually just a circle, they're usually landscapes add to it, you know, lighting, sometimes architectural features, all kinds of stuff is done to enhance the look of it. And I was just, while we're sitting here talking, looking at pictures of roundabouts all over the country, and tons of them have signage. Tons of them are used to identify certain neighborhoods and stuff, so, I mean, obviously we're here with the, there is a safety concern, but I don't see, signs are used in safety in the country. So, I mean, adding a sign isn't the answer to the safety concern, but it certainly maybe in this instance, will add something until more lighting can come in in the future. But I just wanted to point out that signage is a common feature in roundabouts.
Anybody else for public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the board, and the only comment I'll say is that our DOT folk would disagree with you. So I have a motion by Commissioner Sullivan, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. I'll call the question, all those in favor signify with aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would urge that we get some proper signage, lighting out there, not just this sign. All right, I'll move on to item nine, this is a public hearing. This is a quasi judicial process, the audience should refrain from clapping, booing, or shouts of approval or disapproval, avoid potential legal ramifications and possible overturning of a decision of the courts, a public hearing must be fair in three respects, form, substance, and appearance. At this time, we'll have our staff give their presentation, followed by the applicant, public comment, and we'll bring it back to the dais. So, Mr. Mangle.
Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director, this is Garden Side.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, disclosures.
Yep, disclosures. This is quasi judicial, anybody have any disclosures?
No, sir.
No.
None.
None.
None here, thank you.
Garden Side Ormond Station Phase Two, and so this sits north of Phase One. You'll see generally the parcel area that's depicted here, it's encompassing part of those. And so on the aerial, this is the way it looks, and that's gonna be in that northwest corner above the roundabout. And so then you have the mixed use, low intensity, future land use consistent with the DRI, the planned unit development designation also consistent with the DRI. All Zone X, none of it's within a special flood hazard area. Some wetland impacts, goodness, that you do expect because of the soil types, and those wetlands impacts are depicted within your construction plans. There are some unavoidable impacts that are shown, but remember, we have mitigation that's provided for within the conservation area further to the west. And so there is mitigation that's happening as part of each of these developments. But in order to make the development happen, you gotta have some mitigation that's required. These are the pages of the preliminary plat, and so there are six total, I think? And so we went through all those, you can see the dark line area depicting the limits of the plat itself. And then each of these pages then showing in greater detail the pages that follow as part of the plat. This was a question about track A, the drainage area, that is definitely part of this phase, part of Phase Two, was not previously planted as part of Phase One, was not previously developed as part of Phase One. Then the construction drawings that shows up on sheet C-13, there's a detail on sheet C-39 for its development. And so track A, pond A, was within, fully within the limits of Phase Two's plat. Goodness. And you have the last page is the curved table that shows up. PUD Site Development Plan and the PUD Development Agreement back in March was approved. Planning and Development Board recommended approval of this preliminary plat in April. This preliminary plat shows 89 single-family detached lots on that 39 acres, more or less. Largest lot is 49 at, just right at .21 acres. Smallest are multiples at actually a tenth of an acre. There are 12 tracks, all of them are dedicated at the present time to Hunters Ridge Homewall Association of East Florida. Two easements are described that you have present there, and then those are going to the tracks, lift station track, utility easement, utilities provided by the city of Ormond Beach, no part of the subdivision within this special flood hazard area, as I mentioned. And then wetland impacts are handled through the Water Management District. There are no waivers required for this development. And this development is anticipated to eventually become part of the Ormond Station CDD. We'll have another one of those actions we had before that'll amend the boundaries of the CDD to include Phase Two within the boundaries. That'll happen sometime, coincide with the final plating. Options for this, the board may approve this preliminary plat for Garden Side at Ormond Station Phase Two, subject to no construction to commence prior to issuance of a county land development permit, no final plat approval to occur until extension to potable water and sanitary sewer, and that installation is made and approved by the city of Ormond Beach's utility provider, and then see any subdivision improvements not completed by the developer, to be bonded or other surety provided consistent with the requirements of Land Development Code. Alternatively, you could deny this request or continue it to a time and date certain. And just for the record, this was not delayed because of our negotiations with Ormond. We did have it scheduled originally for June 17th, you may have seen that in some of the backup, some of the discussion, at the request of developer. We did provide notice, according to our Land Development Code, to change that date to bring it forward for today. They've asked for it to be heard today instead of on the 17th. With that closed, no waiting, any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We'll bring it to the applicant, any presentation?
Good morning, Kimberly Buck with the Island Engineering Group. I think Adam covered it well, so I'll just be here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Questions, anybody?
We have an agreement, Ormond Beach is gonna provide water and sewer, it's done, okay.
I had one question, if you could come, again, state your name for the record, just.
Jake Barron, U.S. Capitol Alliance.
Explain your concept with the different sized lots, I mean, it's not typical, right, when we get these plats, they're all 60 foot, they're all 50 foot, or, you know, for continuous, for continuity or for, for models and stuff. So explain the, I'm curious as to your thought process with the different sized lots and what you see happening, because it's, it's not what we typically see.
Sure. So this was a discussion had with the home builder, it could be D.R. Horton, and their, I guess the regional president had decided that he wanted this to be an inclusive community, it was less tiki-tacky, not like, you know, you have one type of family, the other type is just all dispersed. You have, I don't know, they have multiple different models of each unit size, and then they can do, we got eight of these, we got eight of these and eight of these, and we can switch them up within the community. And it looks more like a fully functional, real community, instead of just cookie cutter tracks.
As opposed to just flipping the garage from one side to the other?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, there are definitely others that prefer to just slap up the same, you know, unit A, unit B, and just be done. But I think that they are looking to make this a really nice community.
Ultimately, with three different products, you have, instead of, like you said, six, maybe six typical models, you can multiply that by, and get a 18, you know, 18 as opposed to the smaller number, and you get a nice variety of setbacks and appearances.
I would, I would guess more like 12, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just guessing, but just wanted to have you share that, because it was, it's, again, it's interesting, something different that has come before us, so thank you.
Sure.
I don't have any other questions, anybody else? All right, this time we'll open it up for public comment, anybody from the public wish to address the commission on this item? Saying none, bring it back to the board.
We don't have a motion yet.
No.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve 9A as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sullivan, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. Not hearing any other questions, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we'll bring it back to our county report, so the administrator, county administrator report.
Thank you, just two things real quickly, back in March, I made you aware of our progress with the state's new program, it's known as FRAC. Back in March, we had received a score of 48. And what that FRAC program is, is the Florida Recovery Obligation calculation, it was a new initiative that was put out through state DEM, where they would front you the cost of CAT A and CAT B projects upon FEMA obligation. So now, with the new changes that we've made recently to our policies and our procedures over the last several months, we were able to actually improve our score. The state has updated our progress in their program. So we had a score of 48, that now for CAT A, which is our debris, is now risen to a 58. And then for our CAT B, which is those emergency protective measures, they're gonna go ahead and approve 57%. So the maximum score that you could have gotten was a 60, and so we scored a 58 and a 57. And that means that whenever we have those large-scale activities, the state of Florida, once we get the FEMA obligation, they're gonna go ahead and front-load you the money, where normally it takes months to get that money. So that's a huge, significant impact for us financially, especially as a coastal community. This will go a long way in giving us some relief upfront, so just wanted to share that. It is a score that gets updated annually, but this score that we have now is good through the state's fiscal year of '25. We actually start this process again for fiscal year '26, actually, next month, so. Just wanted to recognize the staff that worked really hard, in addition to Jonathan and his staff. These changes were brought about with financial services as well as HR, human resources, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Are we gonna note in Jonathan's file that we didn't get a 60?
We'll follow up with him in a little bit. The other thing that we were working on, wanted to make you aware of, we're currently drafting a request for proposal for some audit services. It's time for us to go out and to audit or to secure a new vendor for the upcoming audit. Florida statute requires local governments, including counties, to follow a certain procedure. Part of that procedure in the selection of annual financial audit, it includes establishing a selection committee. Typically, the committee is made up of all of the elected officers of the county, so all of your different elected official constitutional officers, but then typically you have one member of the Board of County Commission or their designee. So I guess I'm asking, we're gonna have to come back at your next meeting with a resolution solidifying who makes up that audit committee? So who would be representing the Board of County Commission? Would the chair like to serve on that selection committee? So we can finalize that resolution for you at your next meeting, or?
Sure, unless there's somebody that has a propensity to do that, but I don't mind.
If you, yeah, I don't mind either, Mr. Chair, but it, I don't know if it's gonna go past my time of service, so that may be the case too, so that's fine.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't mind doing it, I think I'm actually looking forward to it to be able to dig into and learn more about the process, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, that concludes my report.
All right, county attorney report, Mr. Moylan.
No report this morning, Chairman.
I have a question for you. Is there, we had a legal proceeding on the hotel this past week, so will we get an update on that soon?
Yes, I can, I can let you know, we had a hearing in front of Judge France on our motion for partial summary judgment. He took it under advisement and will be issuing his order soon, we don't, we don't know exactly when. So I would anticipate by your next meeting, you would have an update and, on that. And then in addition, this week, we do have a hearing with our special magistrate, the first one, and one of the matters on that agenda is a, an order of our building official deeming the building unsafe.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, I attended the hearing, and that's, that's fine, it's frustrating to me having, dealing with this forever. It seems like it's one step forward, two steps back, but I mean, the judge seemed to understand how things are going now. At one point, he asked the developer, are you gonna, are you gonna put up the $250,000 bond? And I think he should have told him just do it, but the developer said, no, we're not gonna do that, and which is against the contract we have. And I'm hoping this magistrate hearing is productive, as you mentioned, we'll see. If they condemn, they condemn, actually condemn the location, but it just seems like it just goes on and on, and we'll see. But that's, it was interesting going to the hearing, and he did a good job, everybody.
It has gone on and on, and it is frustrating for everyone. We're hoping that these recent events and upcoming are gonna push them off-center and we get some sort of resolution.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else? No? All right, we'll open it back up for community outreach, if anybody would like to address the commission at this time, I'll open it up for community outreach, public comment. All right, saying none, we'll bring it back, and commission reports, Commissioner Hanson.
I have nothing, sir.
Commissioner Penney?
Nope.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Hope.
Commissioner O'Brien? All right, I have none, we'll see everybody back here at 1:00.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan, thank you very much, we adjourn. Okay. What a deal. Okay.